Good evening and welcome to tonight's virtual general election candidates forum co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Whidbey Island and Snow Isle Libraries. My name is Mandy McLean Stone and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Whidbey Island. I'll be this evening's moderator. My fellow league panelist is Joanna Rooms, timekeeper. Carol Pulliam is our platform manager and technical support. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages voters to be informed and active in government. Snow Isle Library's mission includes providing equitable community access to knowledge and resources. Our partnership enables us to pool our resources to provide neutral and unbiased information to the public. Please check out our respective websites for further information. Okay, before we begin, I'd like to take, I'd like to share some information regarding our forum scheduling process. As soon as the primary election is confirmed, the League of Women Voters of Whidbey Island Forum Committee goes to work inviting candidates and selecting forum dates. Multiple efforts are made to contact candidates and schedules and create schedules that will allow participation of all the candidates. Despite this effort, sometimes we are unable to engage full participation of all candidates. In accordance with league guidelines for fair and equitable forums, when this happens, we invite candidates to submit a written statement that can be read by a league member on our, and appear on our website. I'm a little disappointed to announce that such is the case for the candidates for Oak Harbor School District and North Whidbey Fire and Rescue this evening. These individuals take on important responsibilities to ensure the safe and effective operation of our schools and communities, and we are grateful to all of them for stepping up to take on these roles. Please refer to your voter pamphlets and our website for more information. Prior to this event, all of the candidates received copies of the league's forum policy and ground rules, as well as recording releases and advisories. These documents outline forum structure, expectations for civil discourse, and our commitment to treat all participants with fairness and respect. Since this is a forum and not a debate, candidates are asked to focus on their own ideas and proposed policies. This forum is being recorded by the league. No, see this, a link for viewing it will be posted on our website. No other recording is permitted. Any use of the recording requires approval by the League of Women Voters of Whidbey Island, and then with the caveat that it must be broadcast in its entirety. Candidates are not allowed to edit or use the footage for campaign purposes. The format for this evening will be a standard question and answer format. The questions have been selected in advance by our forum committee, and none of the questions have been disclosed to the candidates prior to the forum. The moderator will pose all questions. Each candidate will then have an opportunity to answer all of the questions. The order of the candidates in respect to questions has been determined in advance by league organizers to ensure a random and fair sequence. The first responder to a question will have 90 seconds to respond. The remaining candidates will have 60 seconds to answer. When each candidate's time is up, the timekeeper will show a red card or say "time." Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. So, let's begin with the candidates for Oak Harbor City Council. Unfortunately, oops, I think we're going to move our page. Unfortunately, Barbara Ames and Britt Crainer will not be able to be with us this evening. So, the first question is going to Andy Plum, Mr. Andy Plumlee. And, um, let's see, we're going to get a, there we go. Mr. Plumlee, you will have 90 seconds to answer the question, and here it is. "The Oak Harbor Marina is deteriorating and delays in decision-making are increasing costs. What specific plan would you support to save the marina? And how would you ensure that the project moves forward without further costly delays?"
Thank you for that question, and thank you for having me this evening. When it comes to the marina, the, my view has always been through building up the economic viability of it. I see it as a tourist destination. I see it as a place where we could have a food truck court, for example. We could have a concert pavilion. We could do things that generate interest in coming down. We know that our festivals down on Pioneer generally do really well, especially our bigger ones. The reason I would propose that as opposed to a port district or other, or taxing the community. When it comes to taxes, our community's tapped out. That's not a well, that well's dry. When it comes to a port district, we've seen with other areas in Washington State, that the way a port district's likely going to fund is they're going to use a tax increment funding or some other mechanism like that, that doesn't actually raise taxes, but will divert taxes from other areas. I think that's a method that the city of Oak Harbor could use, but creating a port district that would use that and divert funds from the city of Oak Harbor, I do not support that. So, the only mechanism I see would be to increase the economic vitality of the area.
Thank you, Mr. Plumlee. Mr. Brian Stuckey, you may answer next, and you will have 60 seconds to respond.
Yeah, so I kind of feel like this question's almost a little late. We did approve a BNO tax that will help to fund the needed repairs. We also have a bond that's expiring this year that we've been paying on yearly. That amount is going to be saved in years going forward, and the BNO tax is going to be enough to dredge, is going to be enough to change the mortgage mix, the slip mix, to accommodate more boats of 30 miles or 30 feet plus, which is becoming more and more common. So I feel like we already have a plan, and the long lengthy delays or the debates that happened were needed to get the best plan possible. As far as the port district, that's a little down the line. That would take the voters, it's something worth looking into, but the port district is more than just the water or the port. It's also economic development of the city as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. The next person to answer is Mr. James Marrow.
Thank you. I'm pleased to address this if I may. And with regard to the marina, as has been noted, we've, the council has already made movements and decisions to provide funding for the interest on a bond with regard to a first or phase one of restoring the marina and dredging it with a complete dredging. We went through many hoops to come to that decision with a complete dredging and then a rebuild of the, of the breakwater. But this again is just phase one. The, as with many things, we're dealing with scarce resources and basically unlimited demands for resources. So with regard to phase two, that would be something down, later down the line. And the city council, of which I'm a member now, would be undertaking other priorities, I think, before phase two. And I would, I would be reluctant to launch off into a phase two funding part without phase one having been completed. And it's part of the entire.
It's time.
Time.
Thank you. I know, it comes up fast, doesn't it?
We're getting started.
All right. Ms. Sandy Peterson, you have 60 seconds to respond to the same question.
Thank you so much, and thanks to the league for doing this. I agree with Mr. Stuckey. That was a long, long time, many, many, many days and weeks of making decisions, but that decision has been made to do a BNO tax on the, I believe, 29 businesses in Oak Harbor that have gross receipts of more than $4 million. Starting at $4 million and one for the tax. So that's a decision done. And how to move the project forward, I, that's something that is being worked on, and I don't believe there will be further costly delays. The decision has been made and now we're just moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Onto question two. Homelessness is an issue in Oak Harbor as in other cities. What specific issues and approaches should Oak Harbor focus on at this time? And a first crack at this question will go to Mr. Brian Stuckey. You have 90 seconds to respond.
So when we talk about the homeless, I think it's important to talk about, to kind of differentiate a little bit. We have the visible homeless, which is what a lot of people think of as the homeless, the people that are on the, the street corners, the people that are panhandling, and then you have the people that are more unseen, living in their van with a mother of two children, people trying to better their lives. For those people, we're actually working on public-private partnerships. The, the county, as some may recall, enacted the affordable tax, affordable housing tax, is a .01 on gross receipts. That's going to go to big projects like the Mulberry Village Project, which is going to be off Swan Town Road here in Oak Harbor, is going to provide 80 affordable housing units. And they're currently looking for a partner in which to develop those, with those funds. When we talk about the more, the more visible homeless, if you will, a lot of those people, there's mental conditions, they may not want the help, there, there could be drug use, although that's not always the case. And that's also going to take a little more enforcement. We're working on a soda district, which is a stay-off drugs district. So if you are caught with a, a drug crime, you'd be trespassed from that entire area. And hopefully, through that process, the prosecutor can kind of have some more stringent teeth as far as drug court and having some people be more forced into situations that might assist those individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. Andy, Mr. Plumlee, would you like to answer the question next? You have 60 seconds.
Yes, thank you. So, right now in Oak Harbor, when we talk about homelessness, we're talking about Spin Cafe, we're talking about the patrons of Spin Cafe. So I'm not going to go to a very macro level and talk about long-term homelessness, chronic homelessness. This question really goes to the heart of what are we going to do about what the community is concerned about right now. I was an early supporter of the soda. I think it's valuable. I think too, we need to put more pressure on the leadership of Spin to be responsible for the actions of their patrons. There are simple tasks that could be done, though the withholding of resources or withholding of sandwiches or coffee until that parking lot is clean is a simple thing, right? They, Spin has said publicly that if someone misbehaves in their place, they have them trespassed. Well, we just put an angry person that has limited ability to control their emotions and responses out into the community. We can be compassionate.
Thank you, Mr. Plumlee. The next opportunity to answer the question goes to Mr. James Marrow. You have 60 seconds, Mr. Marrow.
I'm delighted to answer that question. Regarding homelessness, we're always dealing, it seems like always dealing with the symptoms of an underlying problem. And homelessness doesn't just pop up out of nowhere. There are reasons. People who are drug addicts and then traffic, drug trafficking and the associated crimes. So I'm very much in favor of increasing enforcement of, of the drug traffickers because this, this is the underlying matter is with regard to supply and demand of drugs and the recruitment of new people to be using drugs. So there's the long-term prospect and there's the short-term requirements. So I, I do, I do not think Spin Cafe is located in the right place, for sure. And, and with regard to its usefulness, I'm not even specifically convinced that it's meeting the needs.
Thank you, Mr. Marrow. And Ms. Sandy Peterson, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to note is that being homeless is not a crime. And some people do end up there through no fault of their own. In terms of the issues that are being caused, I believe that where we start with that is with our legislators, both in Washington DC and Olympia, to help us have laws on the books so that we can help these people get the resources that they need to come off of drugs, in some cases to teach them the trade so that they can be on their way to becoming a real viable member of society again. I think that we need to encourage people to want help, to have places they can go immediately instead of having to wait for a place to go. We have some, but not enough.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
You're welcome.
Question three. This question will go to you, Mr. Marrow, first, and you will have 90 seconds to respond. In your view, is the city preparing adequately to respond to climate change effects such as higher tide water lines and perhaps water shortage, water resource shortages?
It's a delightful question, and I thought about this, visited with one of the engineers that used to be with the city, and he mentioned that he had done some research and he, he found that the, the actual land, the tectonic plates are upon which at least Oak Harbor rests and Whidbey Island is actually rising in relationship to the water. So I haven't done any empirical studies on it, but presuming that the water level is going to increase, then of course, all new development, we're going to have to adjust to make provisions for that. But I do think we need to be mindful, you know, if, if the Pacific Northwest in certain areas is rising in relationship to the water line, and that would, you know, mitigate our need to make dramatic changes. But I, I do think we need to, of course, plan, especially for structures near the water, to build with a view that the water would, the water line would continue to increase. And water resource shortages with regard to freshwater. We have a new freshwater line that's online, or it's virtually online. I'm not sure if it's started yet. But we have new resources and we're paying extra money for it from the Skagit River. So I, I don't think that the water shortage is going to be an issue unless we have something that would break the water line, and then we have wells in the city. But there's effort to upgrade the wells that we have and potentially drill others. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Marrow. Mr. Brian Stuckey, you have an opportunity to answer, and you will have 60 seconds.
Well, the really short answer is yes. The regular short answer is, we have a couple plans in place. We have the shoreline master plan, which helps to mitigate those sort of things on our shoreline. We also have through the comp plan that's going to have a climate element to it to help address these things. This is something that we're currently going on through our planning commission, and that will come to council. I mean, as far as water shortages, which I can understand, we're on island. As, as council member Marrow alluded, we get our water from the Skagit River through Anacortes. But we have upgraded our wells to give us more time if a major disaster was to occur. I mean, we upgraded a well as early as six months ago, and we're continuing to do so if something major, as far as a disaster, were to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. And, uh, let's see, Ms. Sandy Peterson, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. As the two previous speakers have spoken about, the city has reserves already in place, and I believe we are working on a third to help us not have a shortage of water should something happen to our water that comes to us across the bridge from Skagit Island. And in terms of preparing for high-water tideline and that sort of thing, we, there are laws and rules in place, and I believe that our departments are working diligently to follow all of those guidelines as best as they can in an ever-changing world of climate change effects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. And, um, Mr. Andy Plumlee, you also now have 60 seconds to respond.
Well, thank you. I feel like this question was written specifically for me. Having two advanced degrees in sustainability, I don't feel that the city is adequately responding to climate change. I don't see any reports about our carbon footprint, our scope emissions. I don't see any annual reports about our effluent discharges. These are things that the city has. They're not showing them to the community. They do spend quite, the community can look for them, but most of the community doesn't know what the importance of those. I haven't seen any SASB compliant accounting done to show what the impacts of our decisions are. Our water, our water treatment facility, you know, LEED certified, that's a good start, but the city's got a long way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plumlee. Question number four. Ms. Peterson, you will have an opportunity to answer this one first, and you will have 90 seconds. Would you support public-private partnerships or other creative financing methods for major infrastructure projects? If so, please give an example.
The first question you've asked, that I didn't quite understand what you were asking. Would you please tell me what you mean when you say major infrastructure projects? Because I want to be sure that I'm answering your question and not one I think you're asking.
Um, I, um, I wouldn't, I don't have a specific project in mind. So I guess I'm asking with things along the lines of the marina or other large-scale projects.
All right. I'll do my best. I believe that anytime we can do a private-public partnership, we certainly should. If you want to specifically talk about potentially moving the marina forward and closer into the city, absolutely, there's got to be a lot of public-private partnerships that can be had. I, I'm sorry, I cannot really give you an example. I was thinking more in terms of potentially working with a private-public partnership for some things like sports things, arenas and stuff we could build for the larger community. I don't know about a major infrastructure project that a developer is necessarily going to want to get into when it comes to the unsexy stuff like sewers and water lines.
Thank you very much for your answer. Let's see, I think I have, oh, Mr. Plumlee, would you like to answer? You would have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. Public-private partnerships, when it comes to major infrastructure, is not generally favorable to the community. The developer tends to take the larger part of that. It generally leads to higher taxes for the community and puts the strain of that infrastructure cost on some of our most vulnerable community members. Washington State does have some options. They have the tax increment funding that I spoke about earlier. They have the local improvement project, which is kind of like a, the tax increment, but it's at the state level, so we would be able to pull the value of, the increased value of those upgrades, a portion of those taxes back into the community to help finance those infrastructure changes. Before we, before we look into public partnerships, I think we need to look at how we can use our taxes better.
Thank you, Mr. Plumlee. Mr. Brian Stuckey, you have 60 seconds to respond.
Uh, yeah, absolutely, I would support public-private partnerships. And we're actually working on some of those currently. We have that small piece of property on Bay Shore that the city purchased that we will be putting on RFP for a public-private partnership to have a structure built there because the city doesn't have the money to just build a giant structure there. We need to have the private industry to do so. It's a major component of things like the comp plan. We're, we're normally developer-led when it comes to infrastructure like pipes, water, sewer. And as we expand into the UGA, where there's major housing developments, if we can work with them to get that infrastructure in place, it's going to reduce the cost of that housing and potentially help with the affordable housing issues.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. Um, question number five.
Do I get to answer?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I skipped over that by accident. Please forgive me. Of course you can. You have 60 seconds, Mr. Marrow.
If you put this question back up, so I'm articulating.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Yes, I'm strongly in favor of private-public-private partnerships, and the, the devil's in the details, but also the creative angel is in the details with regard to getting it right. So the terms of the financing have to be right, and the quality of the infrastructure has to be, you know, up to code and spec. It needs to meet the need for long duration. So with regard to infrastructure, you know, building affordable housing is very tough, and especially now with the exponential increase in construction costs, especially with regard to, say, things as water, freshwater lines and so forth. So, but it is true, the private sector normally is the sector that is best able to address and get things done. The public should be part of the supporting aspect of it, but not really the, the driving of the details. And of course, there is the, there's innumerable projects, but one of the biggest ones is the, the hundred-year-old water lines underneath the pavements and things of this nature. They have no sexy, but we got to take care of them. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Marrow, and again, my apologies. Moving on to question five. What steps would you take to improve collaboration and trust among council members? This question goes to you, Mr. Andy Plumlee, and you will have 90 seconds to respond.
Thank you. So I've been pushing for better collaboration and trust for, I believe, going on five years now. I think that the city council's votes should be readily public. It should be easy to find. We should know how our elected leaders are voting on things that matter to us. I think the city should use more infographs. They should put out more information about where our money is going, what bucket goes into what. So we don't have issues like we had a few years ago where the city wasn't fully transparent that the arts fund was coming from our water bills. So there's a lot of things that we could do to improve collaboration and trust, but most of it all boils down to the city needs to be more transparent with the information they have and readily make that available to the community in a format they can easily consume. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plumlee. Mr. Brian Stuckey, you have 60 seconds to respond.
I just want to confirm, this question is not council member to council member, but council member to the public. Is that correct?
The steps to improve collaboration and trust among council members, that's correct.
So it's council member to council member?
That would be one way of reading it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
That's the way I read it, from one council member to another, not council to public. I'm going to answer it that way. So yeah, from one council member to another. I think we have a good council that works together quite well, and I think can be an example compared to the national politics. I look at Eric Marshall, somebody who I probably disagree with more than anybody else on council, and I consider him a friend outside of council. We need to not try to get zingers in to meetings just to try to drive a point or try and make ourselves look better. We need to legitimately listen to other council members with an open mind without already having our mind made up. We need to communicate where we legally can. We can't have meetings behind closed doors or things like that. But we can call one or two other council members as long as it doesn't become a serial meeting. So I think there's just trust when you just try to treat each other with respect, stop getting the zingers in, and just listen to each other and try to understand where the other side is coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. Mr. James Marrow, would you like to answer this question?
Yes, I would, because the council, my experience for the last eight months on the council has been that there's a lot of cooperation and, what do you call it, collaboration, yes, cooperation, collaboration. I will say this, that the council members I will say this, that the council members bring certain strengths to the council individually that are not one like another. So for Eric Marshall, for instance, he, Councilmember Marshall is very strong in parks and recreation along with other things too. And Brian Stuckey is very good on the financial piece and, uh, and myself, the public, uh, safety and law enforcement. And consequently, we all bring something to the table. But being that said, we are, we're mindful of the fact that there are competing interests and, and we have to deal with that. But as a general rule, you know, we have a great respect among one another in the council. I wasn't on it before, so all I can say is that I'm proud to be part of it because it's, it's like a plus to be involved in a creative and constructive council.
Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Um, and Ms. Sandy Peterson, would you like to answer this question? You have sixty seconds.
Yes, ma'am, I would. This feeds absolutely right into a nonprofit I helped found here on Luby Island called Civility First. And how we improve, if necessary, our collaboration and trust is by listening to, understand the other council members' point of view. To respect that person's point of view, no matter what, how badly or how much you agree with it or not. And not to engage in groupthink, but to find, to work together to find really good solutions for the people that we are here to serve, and that is our, is the people of our city. So we must absolutely listen to understand and to try to speak, to listen, to be heard as opposed to yelling.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
You're welcome.
So question number six will be our last question of the evening. And Mr. James Morrow, you have an opportunity to go first and have ninety seconds to answer this question. What economic development opportunities, in addition to the Marina, do you believe the city should prioritize to contribute to Oak Harbor's fiscal strength and community identity?
I love this question, especially with regard to the fiscal strength. So, um, we cannot really do big box stores, uh, massive corporate developments on the island. And actually, as Councilmember Stuckey has made evident in a previous meeting. And consequently, our big emphasis needs to be on, uh, small business, uh, so small industry, a clean industry on the island, and then also industry that involves mostly teleconferencing or basically distance work, so the intellectual property. I, I marvel that we have such a, uh, potential with our city to do this and, and being able to bring people on the island that bring these businesses to it. And so, uh, one of the issues, of course, is affordable housing, uh, the affordability piece. And as far as our community identity, I, I, I mentioned about Leavenworth House. It's taken a hundred years for them to become an Alpine place out there in the, in, uh, eastern Washington. Well, I'm not saying that we need to be like that, but I, I do believe that we can have an eclectic approach to develop an identity with specific events and being able to attract large numbers of people from the mainland to come over here and spend money. It's our strength. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Mr. Brian Stuckey, you have sixty seconds to respond to this question.
Well, the common things I've heard throughout the years is we need a plan. What, what should our community look like? We don't have an identity beyond the town next to the Navy base. I've also heard, you know, downtown, we need to do something down there. And right now, we are. We just did, just finished the waterfront redevelopment plan where we asked the community, what do you want to see? And the people that came to those workshops, they let us know loud and clear. And we made this waterfront redevelopment plan based on that feedback. Maybe you've seen photos of five-story buildings. Maybe you didn't like that. Maybe you did. We still need feedback as we work through this plan, which should take the next five years or so. I mentioned that parcel that we have, that's the, the own parcel off Bay Shore. Getting that public partner, private partnership on there to help spur the development that area is going, 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 go a long way. And, uh, we need to bring back that windmill, which we're working on with the Rotary Club. Thanks.
Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. Um, Ms. Sandy Peterson, would you like to answer this question? You would have sixty seconds.
Thank you. For me, the quick, easy, and I think the thing that will drive economic development opportunities here most would be to make a big, beautiful sports complex up off Gun Club Road. I think it is the perfect opportunity for a public-private partnership. People love sports. They'll go where their kids are and to watch them play. And for me, it would bring people here who already own businesses who would go, I really like this place. It wasn't all that hard to get to after all, and I want to move my business and my family here. And if the citizens choose me, I will work very hard towards bringing something like that for our community to use and for others to find us.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Mr. Plumley, would you like to answer this question? You have sixty seconds.
Thank you. Well, I've been an advocate for small business development and have been very vocal that we need to be a locally-based economy for quite a while now. So that shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody. But speaking about what we could do right now, something that would be viable, we have some empty buildings. We have the Rite Aid building that's now empty. We also have a large population of our community that has really gotten into pickleball. We have a lot of rain throughout the year, making outdoor not possible. Something simple that could spur just a little bit of economic growth would be using a large space like that to create indoor, indoor pickleball courts. But what the city could do is incentivize, and this is where we could talk about public-private partnerships, incentivize a local community member that's passionate about that sport to build a business with our economic development director and start building out our small business. We don't, we don't need to wait twenty years. We need to start building our economy now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Plumley. Um, that was our final question. Thank you all so much for your thoughtful answers. And now we would like to move to the candidates' two minutes, uh, two minutes for a closing statement. We will begin with Mr. James Morrow, and I'm going to just give you the list. Uh, oh, here we go. Um, thank you. Uh, let's begin with Mr. Morrow.
Um, may I begin then at this moment?
Yes. You have two, you have two minutes for a closing statement, beginning now.
With respect, with respect to the future of Oak Harbor, I think there's just so much potential for us to grow. And I, I'm mindful of the hundreds of millions of dollars that the Navy base brings on here. And I just believe that, uh, that with the proper management and promotion, planning that we can, we can really cause the Oak Harbor to just expand dramatically with regard to commerce and vitality and livability. It's just, uh, it's just getting the pieces to work. And like the housing piece, you know, it involves many different parties and very, very many different, different interest groups. But that's my main focus. And I would add that, uh, until we address the causes of drug dealing and drug ad, drug addiction, I think that that has the potential for really setting us back on, in the city. Um, and because it's a drain, every, every substance-addicted person is ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars of tax money spent on their support. And then there's some people who actually disable themselves on these, you know, they voluntarily just quit and damage themselves with drugs and then they get on disability. So I, I'm aware of this because I come from a town that was just basically destroyed by, uh, the influx of drugs and drug dealing. So that's, that's really all my closing statement for now, but I look forward to serving another, uh, in a four-year, full four-year term. And I'll be working aggressively as a full-timer because I'm retired from the Navy and I love what I do for the city and the community. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Uh, Mr., uh, oh, Ms. Sandy Peterson, you have two minutes for a closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you to the League for doing this forum. It's really important, and I appreciate that you always do them. For those of you who don't know me, I have lived in Oak Harbor for almost twenty years. Part of my commitment to this community has been serving on its planning commission. And I am currently the chairman of the Civil Service Commission for the City of Oak Harbor. As I alluded to a little bit earlier, I am a co-founder of Civility First, which is a nonprofit that was born to help people have conversations about difficult but important conversations where they strongly disagree with one another. I'm also on the board of Youthnet, which is a nonprofit that works with kids that are involved in the foster system. I've personally been a realtor. I've worked as a property manager, a paralegal, and have owned a couple of my own small businesses. So to the voters, I say, if you are looking for a council member who truly listens, who knows how to negotiate to advance issues that are important to you and will fight for the people who often feel unheard, then you are looking for me. Also, if you're looking for someone who understands budgets and how they work, who thinks outside the box for creative solutions to issues that we face, and is not afraid to ask hard questions to find the best possible solutions, you too are looking for me. I thank you for being here tonight, and I would be so honored if you would cast your vote for me, Sandy Peterson.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Mr. Andy Plumley, you have two minutes for a closing statement.
You did, you're muted.
Thank you, and thank you for this evening. Uh, I've been an Oak Harbor resident for going on fifteen years now. That wasn't the plan when I first got here. Uh, but since that time, I've bought a business, grown that business, raised my kids on this island. You know, built my life here, and this is where I'm, I'm going to be. So the reason I am so active and the reason that this is my third time running for city council is because I believe in this island and I believe in what it can be. There's a lot of decisions that are made that impact many members of this community in an unfair and unduly way. Many of our community members are struggling under the weight of housing, the cost of food, the price of gas, low-wage jobs. We can do better, and we should do better. The fact that only two of the four positions today are running in an opposed position is because our community is just trying to survive. Civic engagement is low because we as leaders are failing, and that needs to be turned around. I'm prepared to do the work. You've seen my determination. You've seen I don't give up. You've seen I don't back down, and I'll do the same if I'm on that council. I have one single goal, to see the community that has given me so much continue to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plumley. And Mr. Brian Stuckey, you have two minutes for a closing statement.
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate the, the chance to, to come here and speak with you folks. I, I guess I have the advantage of the one person on here running unopposed, but I still find it important to respond or to go to every forum I'm invited to just because I think people have the right to learn a little more about the folks that represented them. When I was elected four years ago, I didn't throw out a lot of fancy campaign promises because I didn't fully know what the job was till I was in it. I said I was going to be accessible, and I was going to listen. And I feel like I have done that. I am always on social media and every Facebook group. You're going to see me right away when there's a comment about the city or a question or something of that nature. If I see a lot of chatter, I know not everyone's on social media. I'll then take to the newspaper with a, a letter to the editor, uh, or I've been on the sound-off column more than once. I also am at every event. It's very easy to tell people, come on to a council meeting. We're, we're there to talk to you. That doesn't work for everybody. We have to come to where they are. The public tells us what issues are important to them, not necessarily vice versa. So I think I've been accessible, approachable. Uh, I think that we just need to do what the majority of people want. And if not, we have to have a good reason. We need to explain that reason. I feel like I kind of specialize in breaking down large, complex problems, uh, and making them more simple. For example, not everyone knows that Highway twenty is a state road, not a city road. I mean, that's just something you, you don't know always unless you're in this world. So I've appreciated the last four years. It's been absolute joy. The little wins of fixing street signs that people reach out to me about or, uh, speeding. I, I communicate with people by getting speed signs for others' house. Just reach out to us, advocate. When you take the moment, a few moments to communicate with us directly, we'll always see if we can help you with your problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. And a final thank you to all of the candidates for participating and to our audience for attending um, this forum. I also would like to thank and recognize Carla Grau Egerton, our forum committee chair, and my fellow forum committee members for their hard work. An additional thank you goes to our timekeeper, Joanna Rooms, as well as Carol Poliam for making our virtual forums a success. Remember, if you've moved recently or you haven't registered to vote, you can do so online or by mail until October twenty-seventh. You can also register in person at Island County Elections Office until Election Day, November fourth. Uh, ballots will go out on October seventeenth. If you have not received your ballot by October twenty-seventh, please contact the Elections Office for a replacement ballot. Sometimes, um, things get lost in the mail or get into the wrong mailbox. So if you haven't received your ballot by the twenty-seventh, do check with the Elections Office so that you have an opportunity and time to vote and get your ballot in. Remember, your ballot is your voice. Use it. And democracy is not a spectator sport. Encourage your friends and family to vote as well. Thank you again, and have a very good evening.